Okay, so now we have a YubiComp is a 2020 town hall meeting. Yep. So here is agenda. So I'm going to give you some updates on the YubiComp site. And Sylvia will join us to give some updates from the Inno side. And then Chris will give you some updates on the Isawick side. After those updates, we're gonna do a bit of interactive polling as well as Q and A, which we spend most of the time of this town hall meeting. So you can ask any questions about the conference organization or steering committee organization. So we have general chairs and TPCs and Sylvia, the crystal from Isawick SC. The me as the representative of the steering committee from YubiComp. So updates from the YubiComp. So thank you for your hard work 2022. The Monica, Nadia, Kristoff, Flora, Gregory, Thomas, Jennifer, and also all the other chairs who made the very first virtual YubiComp is a week happen. Thank you very much. I'm pretty sure that's a lot of effort you needed to make to make this happen. I knew that they put a lot of effort for the planned the physical conference. But unfortunately, the the event of the this COVID-19, they had to make a very difficult decision to move to a fully virtual conference like we have right now. But that the team made another enormous effort to make this happen. So thank you very much. And then please see them in the Gather Town after the closing penalty. Say please say thank you to them. And they put a really, really lots of effort, right? So it looks like quite, you know, easy to do that, but it isn't, you know, they have to set up all kinds of tools and they have to collect all kinds of data and the information from the authors and they make bring it together so that you can have a nice virtual conference experience. I'd like to let you know that our future conference plans and locations. For the next year, we have decided to go with a fully virtual conference again. I'll explain the details later. And for 2022, we are going to Cancun, which was originally set up in 2020. But we decided to move this to 2022. And for 2023, we collected a bit from the Pacific Asia originally for 2021. And the SC made a decision that we are going to go to Melbourne, Australia. But due to the move of 2021 and the 2022, we decided to go to Melbourne for 2023. And for 2024, the bid is not open yet. But I'd like to let you know that the preference would be given to Europe. So if any of you are interested in hosting YubiComp is a week, please let me know. So the rationale or the holding the fully virtual conference again next year. So we still have some uncertainty about international around the international travels due to COVID-19. I think the situation is getting better in many countries, but still the international travels still abandoned. I think we still don't know whether that's lifted up or not by the next September. And then we definitely want to avoid last minute changes to the fully virtual conference from the physical conference, which caused a lot of work in the organization team. Luckily, we also don't need to pay any penalty fee for the postponement of the physical meeting in terms of those venue in Cancun. So that's another good news. As you may not know, we need quite a bit of time to coordinate with ACM in terms of getting approval or the finance, making a contract and kind of stuff. So we definitely need one year to plan out the how the confidence should run on the next year. And then 2020 team created a wonderful asset we can reuse, such as Zoom and Uber and Gather Town. So so we can basically use the same system for the 2021. And so that, you know, we can have more expectable experience of the conference for you. And for 2021, so we are looking for the GCs, general chairs and technical program chairs who are willing to tackle this challenge with us. So recommendations and the safe recommendations are very welcome. So if you have any person in your mind, if you are really interested in doing things, please send an email to me or just directly talk to me at the Gather Town meeting after the closing penalty. And if you get approached by me, please say yes. It's important to set up the team as soon as possible so that you can work the 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 next year's conference as this is possible. And I'm also happy to help to the GCs and TPCs. So please raise your hands if you would like to join us. And 2022 in Cancun, this is another lucky part for our community is that the 2022 DC has already put enormous effort to explore a new presentation format. Unfortunately, this didn't happen due to the transition to the virtual fully virtual conference. But we definitely would like to make them happen in Cancun. So that's that's something we'd like to see. And then some of the 2020 teams kindly show their willingness to continue serving as GCs for a physical gathering in Cancun. But we also direct to give some break for them. So that's why I would like to recruit new general chairs and technical program chairs for the next year. So in terms of the new presentation format, that was presented in the last year town hall meeting. So I would like to give a brief summary of that. So that last year, YubiComp Isawick SC brought a discussion issue about a new presentation format for the paper trucks, address and increasing the number of the papers to be presented. And then 2020 TPCs were in charge of exploring the new options with the help of GCs. And for maintaining transparency of the decisions, steering committee decided to form a team that included a few representatives from SC as well as the YubiComp Isawick community. As a result, we had a distinct, the James Scott was chairing this team and the of Sunny, Mark, Christine, Rajesh, Robert, Zada, the team members, and also me as observer. I dearly appreciate their effort to discuss the new presentation format with the 2022. The very quick summary of the progress. So TPC created the initial format plant. The discussion team, as I presented in the last slide, reviewed and provided feedback. So that was done at the end of the February 2020, 2020. However, as you know, due to the outbreak with the COVID-19, we decided to move to a free virtual conference. So as a result, 2022 needed to employ different paper presentation formats. Although it reflects some aspects of the ideas we discussed, such as a shorter presentation time and a longer panel discussion idea of a session. So I heard the kind of many boys saying that the people enjoy the panel discussions. We would like to hear more about your experience of those paper trucks and as well as other trucks. Also, the experience in other tools such as Uber. Gather town. So please grab that's the current GCs and TPCs or SC members to let us hear your voice. And for the future conferences for the next year, we probably won't make any major changes in terms of the paper presentations, mainly because of the limited time, a limited amount of the time. But we may want to do some like a small experiment so that we can have some lessons learned from the upcoming years. For 2022, we will keep expanding the new presentation formats. And then hopefully you will see them in Cancun next year. So that you have a better interactive experiences about the kind of research presentation. And we are definitely looking forward to your feedback. So please feel free to share them with TPCs or any of the SC members like me. Please let us hear your voice. So we have set up the meter. And you I'm we are asking the two questions. So please tell us the best things of the YubiComp Isawick 2020. And how can the next virtual YubiComp physically better? So please scan this QR code that you're going to ask to type some keywords or some sentences. So that's really useful information for us. And then we also distributed the conference survey. So please have your time to respond those survey as well. It's really important to hear your experience because this is very first time for us to run the conference virtually. So we're gonna share some results of this meter DM this meeting. So you can, you know, keep listening to some presentations by us while answering these two questions. Okay, so let's move on to input. Sylvia.
Okay, here. So thank you, Koji, for your for your summary and for your observations. So I'm gonna give a short update on input. So guess so for the slides, Koji, are you? Yeah. So just a brief recap on statistics. I gave some information about statistics in the opening. So I'm not gonna repeat all of that. But just, I mean, some core numbers that I think may be interesting to to look at in terms of submissions we got from the beginning of the journal and accepted papers. And thus the acceptance rate that we have until now, which is 24%. I think from the plot they put on this slide, you can see that there is kind of a trend on the acceptance rate that goes a little bit down. So we are observing that and, you know, trying to analyze it a little bit more detail. And then we're gonna see that next year, which which number we're gonna present then for the for the acceptance rate. I think it's also interesting on the next slide to see. So on the Inno webpage, you can you can find this word cloud with the subject areas of all the papers published until now. And I think it's nice to look a little bit at these to get a feeling of what's the the scope of the journal, right? The actual scope of the journal in terms of what are the topics of the papers published. We very much hope that topics, I mean, you already see also, I mean, a very interesting and actually wide also range of topics. You see also wearable topics. And I hope that from this year on, we're gonna get, you know, even more contributions in that area. So wait in the on the next slide, I want to, you know, mention again that we had this big change in 2020 so that Isawick decided to join the journal first publication model of input, which basically means that both YubiCompany Isawick now draw their the content of their main technical tracks from from input. I think the Isawick chairs are gonna briefly mention these also later. So I'm not gonna give more details on this. There is also, there have been a lot of changes on the input editorial boards. I mean, both in terms of so did editors, but also in terms of editors. So on the next slide, I'd like to use the next slide to thanks, thank actually our editors. I mean editor-in-chief and editors of Merity. I mean, first of all, Gregory, who passed over the role of editor-in-chief to me in last November and the editors, Vasilis Costagos, Julie Keans, Koji Yatani, that also in the course of 2019, left the team. I mean, they, I think deserve an applause for their service to the to the community. And I would like also to say a big welcome to the new editors that replaced the upcoming editors. So Tanzim, Tao, Thomas, and Giband are actually already working for the journal since since several months. As last point, I wanted to discuss with you, and I think this could be also something we could, you know, that could raise some questions then later, is the COVID-19 response of input on the next slide. Could you sorry, go to the next slide? So I think I want to start with a positive note, which is that the review process actually suffered on minor delays. We had, I think, as you can imagine, some some troubles, especially in the February cycle, because basically the emergency, at least in Europe and US struck us when we were actually collecting reviews or in the last phase of reviewer assignments in the February cycle. And that, of course, affected many, many people. But I was actually very, very positively surprised by the reaction of our so did editors because notwithstanding the difficult situation, many, many editors and so this editors were leaving. We basically really had only minor delays and and no major delays on the on the issues done of the journal. I think this is a very, a very good result. We decided in that situation to grant submissions in the November 2019 cycle that had the year. So submissions that got major revision decisions in that cycle had the possibility to resubmit either in February or May. Given the situation, we decided to give them the chance to resubmit also in August. So we prolonged, so to say, the time available to work on major revisions. And I think five or six papers took also advantage of this possibility. We have also discussed a lot in the teams of editors, the possibility to, I mean, we have been asked also about deadline extensions. We decided not to extend the deadlines in the sense not move the deadline in May 15 to May 20 or or later. This has several reasons. I would say the major one is that input actually already offers for deadline a year. You see my voice is is going away. And we have very, very fast review cycles. So we basically have nose lag between cycles. So when we finish one cycle, we are ready preparing the next one. And this is also important for the issues that are then published. So if we move the deadlines, then it's not possible for us to make it on time for the issue. Right? I mean, after that. And so it is very, very critical for us even even one, two weeks. And and so extending the deadlines, we understand that that's a benefit for the authors, at least at least on the short term. But that puts a burden on on the journal, both in terms of 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 timing of the review cycles and the issues and of of internal organization. And yeah, so I think that's it. I mean, we are of course open to discussion and suggestions on all these points. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Sylvia. And now we move on to Isawick updates. Kristoff.
Thank you, Koji. I mean, as you, you said yourself said already, and Sylvia also mentioned, there has been one big change for us, which is that the long papers that traditionally were part of the Isawick proceedings or outputs, so to say, have now been redirected or have been now directed to Inwards. And, you know, representing the W in Inwards, basically. And I think this is a process that already started long ago because slowly the two communities have merged ever since Isawick and YubiComp have been co-located. And we already had a big overlap between the Isawick BC members and the Inwards, the Inwards associate editors. So I think this is something that slowly gradually moved and this year, actually, last year became a reality. So the last two issues have been already there. Been filling with the long wearable papers that we know. Another change, however, is also that our long-term leader, Thad Stanner, has stepped down as the chair for the steering committee. And this is a very big responsibility because he's been doing this for more than two decades. And these are very big shoes to fill. So therefore, there's two of us now who are going to who's going to try to replace that, Kai Kunze and myself. That, of course, will be still involved in the board. But the change in leadership is something that we are now, you know, slowly getting used to. And then the final thing I wanted to say from the Isawick side is that's next year, or well, the the next edition will be Isawick's 25th anniversary. So we already started to plan bigger things to celebrate this. And before my voice also completely dies, I think this is it for my sense.
Yeah, thank you very much. And then now we are moving to the interactive polling and Q and A. So I totally misunderstand how the meeting works. And I will hand over to Flora, who kindly set up the this meeting for us.
Hello. So let me just share share my screen. So if you, if you're not on yet, would you please go to mentee.com and use the code 6201829? We have 18 people responding. Let's take more responses. Tell us the best things of YubiComp Isawick 2020.
Yeah, so the link is available in the chat in this too.
Yeah, there's a link or you can also straight go straight to mentee.com and use the code 6201829. I can already see some key topics emerging. One of the big words here is Gather Town. So obviously, people love Gather Town. Six minutes talk. So apparently, this was one of the, you know, the most radical change we did, I think, up to YubiComp in London last year, the talks were about 12 minutes. And then we said, what about if we cut it by half to six? And apparently, people love them. I mean, in the in the beginning, it was, there was a huge resistance to do it. I mean, how could you feed a presentation of a journal paper into six minutes? It sounds impossible, but actually works. So I'm really glad that people actually found that as one of the highlights. Coffee, wow. How would you actually share that? Moderated Q and As, low cost. Uber. So some people love Uber. We've got so many responses. Please keep them coming. All right. What else do you see? What else do you see here, Koji, that are highlight for you?
It's the short talks, low cost, Gather Town.
I mean.
Somebody in a no travel.
Any of the GC or if Gregory is also on right now, feel free to comment on what you see here.
I saw someone had mentioned more cowbell, less Gregory. I'm all for that.
The cowbells are on me, I guess.
Much Gregory content.
All right. There's Kristoff too over there. Nadia Wibels. Nadia, you're hit. So.
Discussion, I see a discussion was a hit.
Okay. What else? Pre-recorded presentation. And that's the word sleep there. So I actually had a chat with someone who who feels he's having a jet lag because he's from Asia-Pacific, same as me on this side. So and I do feel jet lag too, although we don't have to travel because we actually have to. We we have roughly the minimum amount of hours of sleep between the two main paper sessions. Unlike, you know, a lot of you folks in the US side. So so, yeah, we do feel jet lag too, although it's actually local. What else?
So I think six-minute talks and short talks, you know, can be clustered together. That that becomes a big one. AMA coming up. AMA is Ask Me Anything is one of the activity we had in Gather Town. That's good.
Okay. I'm still getting responses. Tell me when you think we are ready to move to the next question.
Yeah, maybe should we move on to the next question?
Let's move to the next question. So thank you for all the feedback. If you want to write more, there's space to do so in a survey, right? In a survey, we accept long text responses.
Yes.
Next. Now, how can the next virtual YubiComp Isawick be better? How can we get this improved from our experience? So there have been a lot of positives, but how do we even make it even better? No Gather Town. This is a complete opposite, right?
Well, yeah, for people.
Yeah, obviously, we can we can please everybody.
Stable Gather Town. Okay, that's a little bit more specific.
Longer talks.
Better audio. Okay, so we have a competing longer presentation and longer talks. No Uber.
No Kai deadline. There you go.
How about that?
More Gregory.
I thought people want the less Gregory.
I think they want to throw Gregory into Gather Town with a Uber.
Yeah, you should hang around, you know, now that normal, there's no more Kai deadline. It'll be nice if everyone could actually just hang out and get a ton after this.
Yeah, so you're all invited. After this, there is a closing. And after the closing, obviously, you're all invited back into Gather Town, talk and chat and even more feedback. So we love that.
Yeah, yeah. So absolutely. I think some of us didn't have an opportunity to explore around Gather Town due to the guided line, but it's already over. Yay. So just please join at the Gather Town and then, you know.
And if we are all in agreement, I would say let's meet at the beach in Gather.
Oh, yeah, that's good. I think Nadia has the guide for us. So let's follow.
Yes, I'll show you at the end of the of the closing, how to get to the beach.
All right. So we can keep that going, but I like to hand this back over to you.
Yeah. That's pretty much the content we prepared for this town hall meeting. And the rest of the time, we'd like to spend with you by letting you ask questions directly to me or other GCs, TPCs or Inma editor-in-chief. So please write down your Q and A in where or they supposed to write. In Uber or Z? Whatever you like, I guess.
Anywhere. Yeah.
Right off the bat, there's a question about the input impact factor. Sylvia, you want to talk about that?
Oh.
The question is specified how, whether.
How are things going with the input impact factor?
So we, so it's not that there is an application going, so we should get an official impact factor. I don't have information on when we can expect this to be to be official. So this is ongoing. ACM is taking care of this. And I I hope to get new information soon. So the application, I think, has been submitted already before the summer or the beginning of the summer. So these things may take some months. But so we we don't have an answer yet.
Okay, so there's another questions about the guided line. So this already came up in the polling as a follow-up, any idea about the dates of the conference in the future? So this already discussed in a town hall meeting last year. And then we kind of decided to move to early October for at least upcoming a few years. Although the 2022 already set up before the 2019. So that's why we were not able to move around. But for next year, I'm not sure that's whether it's possible or not to move the dates. But if possible, we are thinking of moving the days a little bit so that we can avoid the collision with the guided line.
I think for 2022, Monica can probably confirm, we should also be able to move it to early October, right?
Yeah, maybe we need to talk to ACM. We might be, we might need some update on the PAF. So that's kind of the admin stuff we have to do. But I think I'll definitely talk to ACM. Any other questions?
There is again a kind of question about the Kai deadline. It came up also on Hoover. So we just answered, the answer is yes, we're working on it. I think it's already confirmed. For 2023, we're probably going to be able to do it 2022 and probably also next year, model law ACM agreement. So on Hoover, somebody is asking if it's possible to have slightly longer panel discussion after each session. Those are very informative.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a great idea. So I actually chatted with Flora right after the first session end and then I kind of missed that the some sort of like a kind of informal kind of interactions are typically we have after the session, right? So that's the authors are still around the podium and then some of the, those I think just came to the podium next year, the podium and then they're going to interact with the authors directly, right? So, you know, I kind of missed that because of atmosphere and then Flora kind of nicely addressed that issue by providing additional space, right? You know, I think the Gather Town, right? So maybe, you know, we may want to have, maybe, you know, we can have a longer panel discussion is my idea. But we can also maybe explore other possibilities such as having more sort of, you know, encouraging some sort of informal conversations right after the sessions.
So I'd like to talk just a little bit about that, Koji, just to let people know what we were planning to do if we had the regular physical conference. So one of the ideas was that we would have what we were calling a multimodal session and the idea there was it would be very similar to the sessions we had this year where there would be these back-to-back presentations and then some collective discussion. But immediately at the end of the session, the authors would go to poster stations. We wanted them to be basically in the back of the room where the session was, so the conversations could continue with those particular authors. And that bleeding into social activities like lunch. And I think the venue in Cancun actually is very amenable to that kind of activity. So I agree that the discussion is the most valuable part. It's not clear that everyone wants to sit in a session and listen to discussion that they may not be participating in. But if we could do something where you could have a dedicated time to talk to authors, even a collection of people, even a facilitated discussion with those authors. It would have been great in this virtual conference if you could have just clicked a button and gone straight to that poster presentation after, after session discussion, because it was a little hard, I realized, for people to get to the place in Gather Town to have those kinds of discussions. But I'd like to hear other people's ideas about what we might do for both virtual and physical in the future.
Oh, thanks very. Moving to the next questions. Can we encourage more senior faculty and researchers in industry coming to Gather Town? It'd be great help student network. I totally agree with that. I pretty, some of us kind of stayed in Gather Town for a while. I wasn't able to make it for the kind of late night time in Japan time, but I was trying to be as much as I can in the kind of afternoon, the morning time in Japan. So, yeah, but it's maybe a little bit difficult to kind of find a specific person or in a kind of directly talk to them. So maybe, so I think that's the GC's already set up the, the session, something called like, that's the AMA. I think that's a wonderful idea. Maybe we want to explore be more kind of similar things in the next year.
Can talk a little bit about that. So the AMA, I think worked relatively well. We heard a lot of people that liked that. We didn't hear anybody who disliked it, which is good. It was only one day, so it would be very feasible in the future to expand it multiple days. We need to find people, senior people who are interested and the commitment is not very big and I think it's fun. So I think it's very doable. On the industry side, and maybe Mike, you can talk a little bit about it. So we tried to do that with industry as well. Industry didn't see really benefit to do that, although we tried very hard. They were like, oh, we don't know if a virtual event would bring us something. We were convinced it would. I think for next year, we could try harder and show, you know, the success of what happened this year. And I'm, I don't know, I'm not sure, but I'm pretty confident and some industry folks will see, you know, the benefits of doing it.
Okay. Next question is about in what? Most journalists accept a conference paper extension. Does Emu accept this, which might be tricky due to the anonymization policy? Sylvia?
Yeah. Well, I mean, an extension of a conference paper is of course something you can submit to input as long as the, you know, the, the new contribution is, is significant enough to, to grant a new publication. And also, as we always phrase it, the length of the paper must be commensurate with the contribution. So we do not expect the paper then to repeat what has been published already, but only to present the new content. The anonymization policy should not be a major issue because the, the anonymization policy we have in input is, I would say, a weak one. So we actually require only to anonymize the, basically the front page of the paper and the, and the header. But we do not prohibit to refer to previous work. So that's a choice of the authors, whether they want to explicitly refer to their previous work. For example, a conference paper, or if they want to do that anonymously, so by referring to that work in third person. And so I don't believe that's a problem. That's more a choice of the authors than how they want to present their contribution. I hope this.
Yep. And the next one is also kind of in what? Thanks. Can we consider reviewing workshop for in what? To have new researchers in the community and also to standardize expectations?
Oh, so organizing workshop for, for reviewing guidelines and so on. That's, that's a very good question. I think I've seen somewhere even that there is an effort in this direction or at the SIC level, but definitely, yes, I mean, that's a very good point. Where we could do more, I mean, coaching and also try to calibrate, of course, than the reviewing standards. So in general, I would take this as a suggestion that we try to coach our reviewers, especially the most junior ones, want a little bit more. We have to figure out the logistics for this. We can start maybe with more information about reviewing principles and reviewing guidelines.
Sylvia, could I just suggest maybe we do a half-day workshop at UBCOM next year?
That's a good point. Yeah. I mean, if we can do it virtually, it's also in a, in a sense easier, of course, to at least to organize it. We could do multiple slots even so that fits maybe people in. So that's definitely a suggestion. Yes.
Depending on how it goes, it could be a regular workshop.
Yeah.
That's true. Yeah. Yeah. So another thing related that we may want to consider is some sort of like a paper writing workshop. I think the many of the authors now are from different countries and then some of the authors are not, no native speakers. And then they definitely would like to have some guidance to how to write, you know, attractive in what submission. Right? So that's, you know, there are some nuggets you should know and that you can easily do to make your paper, you know, looks polished, right? So that's, I think, of course, you know, as well as how you frame your work and kind of stuff. So if you can do some sort of like a venturing things, I think that's also pretty encouraging as a community.
Someone saying there's a hand raised. I can't see a hand, I can't see a hand raised, but I have my stuff.
There are so many communication channels to us.
Oh, Flora said there's a hand raised. Is it no longer raised, Flora?
Yeah, I think the head's not on the race.
Okay. By all means, if you want to say something, you're sitting out there in Zoom or Overland, raise your hand.
Yeah, that's another way to do it.
Yes, we can unmute you and you can, you know, share your experience or maybe ask your questions directly.
Okay. One question in ZU. Really enjoyed the panel today on the multidisciplinary perspective. Can we have some more of this? What we, what might we do to encourage people from other community to be in UBCOM?
I just want to say, this is a real advantage of the virtual format. It's not that difficult to get people to agree to spend an hour of their time. And don't even necessarily need that much notice. So this is really a wonderful feature of being virtual.
Yeah, that's so true. Maybe we want to expand a bit more to invite more people outside the community so that we can get some like a nice stimulation besides papers and demos and posters. Yeah, I always enjoy that as keynote and it's really, you know, something that I don't really know, right? So that's, that's really a new perspective, new knowledge. And that's, that's something I always looking forward to see. Any other question? Okay. So some of them in the UBA, oh, that's the same thing, I guess. Yeah. I also would like to give your feedback on if you have attended any other brochure conferences, you know. I wonder what some good things they saw in the other conferences and they, we might want to use or we might want to transfer from. So that's maybe another things, maybe we will also direct to know. And if there is something like that, please let us know as well. Through Q and A right now, or maybe directly talk to us in Gather Town later.
There is a comment, there is a comment to one of the question about the panel. I think we can take it as a question. It's, it would be good to repeat sessions in multiple time zones. So we discussed this and this was an option. So we, we wanted to do that at some point. So that's one of the possibilities to do it. It's obviously more work for, especially for panelists. If you have pre-recorded talks, it's easy enough to play them. But then the question was, what do we do with panels? If you want to do engaging panels, are we repeating the panel multiple times? Are authors going to show up or are we only going to have panels with part of the authors that are okay with that time zone? So yes, it is possible, but obviously there are shortcomings for that as well. And I know that Gregory, you were also involved in some of this discussion. I don't know if you have any more thoughts on it.
Well, yeah, I mean, we had lots of discussions about how you can take advantage of the virtual format. So some of the things we talked about is replaying whole sessions and then having another live discussion. But as Nadia is talking about, that is an additional burden on people. We also thought about people being assigned to, papers being assigned to multiple sessions so that you could see a different mix of papers together. I'm not so sure that that's that good an idea. I definitely see that a session is best when it's got an intellectual coherence to it. The discussion flows more naturally. And so I thank AJ Brush and the organizers for having taken one of our sessions and breaking it into its two natural themes and doing those separately as opposed to showing all those papers all at once.
There is another question in Hoover. So when do we move to in-person conferences? Can we keep recording each talk? Just really nice to have these recordings.
Totally agree.
Yep.
Yeah, last one.
But you know, when we try to record these conferences, the live conferences, it's, they, they charge an arm and a leg to do that. Just like renting a projector at these conferences. I think we need some pressure here to, to show that it's not that expensive to do the recording of these, of these talks. So we need to figure out a way to do it ourselves, kind of naturally, or people pre-record talks. And we just at the, at the real conference, we show the recording and the author is there for the real discussion. One of the advantages of pre-recorded talks is that session shares don't have to worry about cutting people off.
That's true.
I think, I mean, I think also the quality of the talks is maybe on average better, at least, I mean, from what I, I saw, actually enjoyed most of the talks. They were well organized and of course all on time. So I think there are many advantages on the pre-recorded talks.
One interesting thing that I noticed is that some, at the beginning, we were expecting some pushback for the pre-recorded talks because that's not something we announced. But we needed to go for that for the virtual conferences. We didn't hear basically any of the authors saying, no, I don't want to do it. So it seems like, besides what Sylvia said, which I agree, the quality was good, was higher sometimes at real life and in-person talks. Authors, you know, were okay to do it as well, which is a good thing.
What we're seeing is a really actually polished talks because a lot of these authors have re-recorded them multiple times before it's actually submitted, which actually becomes a benefit to the audience. And it's actually benefited to the authors too, because now it becomes a permanent thing that everyone can see and watch. And it's actually creating a lot more exposure to the work rather than the physical conference when you normally have, yeah, you don't have as much as exposure as you actually get. And I don't know if Nadia will explain that maybe later in the closing, but we do have high numbers attending each of these sessions.
Yeah, yeah. So that's something maybe you want to highlight, Nadia.
Yeah, we can, we will talk about that in the, in the closing, but we have.
That's great. Yeah.
We have, you know, some record attendance talks of session talks of over 500 that, you know, it couldn't not, it could not happen, you know, in a, in a regular conference, multi-track. So stay with the close for the closing so that you can actually see those numbers. So there is a question from Baroon, who is actually one of our SP. Interesting. I see you here and I see you there. It's possible to have talks directly on Gather Town instead of Zoom. It would have been more natural transition to discussion after the talks. That's a very good point. We thought about it. Gather Town is so experimental. We didn't even know if it would work for what we did. So we thought it would be too much of a risk to do it, but it is totally something that I think, given what we have seen in terms of, at least from a technical perspective, Gather Town was very stable, not for everybody, but I think, you know, it might improve for the future. I think it's feasible. For this year, we just didn't want to risk it because we had no idea if it would actually work. And you can imagine, not even even the talks at some point, because the infrastructure doesn't allow it, it would be quite of a disaster, but that's a good idea.
Yeah, I had proposed that we actually do this town hall in Gather Town to maybe experience that, but that was probably wisely. So it was turned down. Once they figure out how to reduce the number of times they recalculate who you're near, that's when the real bottlenecks happened. If you move around a lot and you're constantly recalculating who you're near, the thing just breaks. But I think that's a fixable problem. And I agree, I think it would be really interesting to try doing something in that kind of environment.
Many practice has been done. There is a smaller conference, around 100 attendees this summer that did exactly that and they were really happy. You know, given our size, we're like, okay, if it works with 100, it doesn't mean it works with 1,000. So again, it was a risk we didn't want to take.
Yeah, yeah. I also expected Gather Town. I really enjoyed it. I definitely would like to use it for my teaching. So that's something that I experienced. I personally would like to run this for. But you know, we should also be aware of some connection issues. The Alex brought up the issues of the Gather Town has some VPN issues as well, particularly connection from China. So whereas Zoom doesn't necessarily, you know, with a Zoom, people don't necessarily need to have the VPN to get connected, although that's the connection might be a bit unstable. Yeah. So that's something, that's another things we have to think about.
Another important thing about Gather Town that I would like the community to think about is accessibility. So it's not quite accessible as you would like. And unfortunately, there is no real virtual conferencing tool like that that is accessible right now. So we hope that they will improve, but that's one important thing as well, I think, for our community to have an accessible conference tool.
Okay. Any other question? Maybe otherwise we can have a bit of a short break before the closing. Are we have the closing in this too or moving to something else?
I think we'll be on Zoom. So if you're ending, you know, yes, you come back in seven minutes and we're going to have our closing on Zoom. The link is as usual Hoover and on the website. And after the closing, please, as I said, even if you don't come to the closing, you really should come to Gather Town.
Yeah, great. So thank you very much for joining us on the town hall meeting. We are looking forward to you seeing during the next year, the virtually. And then, yeah, so that's the closing. Prenally is happening in five, six minutes. Please go there. Unfortunately, I cannot go there because I have to bring my daughter to my kindergarten. So that's maybe another benefits, you know, I have to do, I can do something like childcare meanwhile at the town hall meeting.
You would be the coordinator.
Thank you very much and enjoy the rest of the day. And please also join the Gather Town after the closing panel. I will do that. They meet people and say any things about you felt in the conference and how you would like to run the next year. If you're interested in doing the GCs and TPCs, please let me know, and, you know, we're happy to discuss. Thank you very much.
Before we go, just one thing I'd like to say, Koji.
Okay.
I think everyone out there watching, we owe a huge debt of gratitude to Nadir, to Kristoff, to Monica, to Alex and Franchelli, who were the virtual online chairs, and to the vast amount of student volunteers who made this all work. You guys, we're very indebted to you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, please meet them and say thank you in Gather Town.